I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, start off of agenda, but update from the work session on the Lakes situation. Tom has met with the police chief. He had a meeting with the Lakes Committee Chair and Vice Chair and General Counsel and other key management and we're working on a potential solution or some ideas probably be ready next month, right? Just to discuss next month.
Plan is to present it to the Lakes Committee for their consideration at their September meeting.
Perfect.
And if that goes well, then it would be forwarded to the Rules and Regulations Committee with the goal of having it implemented January 1st.
Got it. Thank you. So, moving along, back to the agenda, approval of July 24th regular session.
I think we have a proxy if you just.
Oh, sorry, thank you, you're right. Deborah Director, I even got the blue coach, I even did it grammatically here, is not with us and Cucklin has her proxy. Thank you Doug, I have it written here. Now can I go to them? Okay, thank you. Approval of the July 24th regular session minutes. Thanks David. JB, thank you. Any corrections, comments? No, all in favor? Thank you. And the work session on August 21st meeting minutes. Thank you David.
Second.
Thanks Joe. Anything on those that we saw that we need to change or discuss? All in favor? Thank you. Joint Advisory Committee report, recreation person.
Robert isn't here and we didn't get a summary, but I do have a summary of the Lakes Committee meeting. Rick Echols reported there was 12,373 contacts by Lake Rangers with 580 removed. They continued to remove storm damaged trees from the lake and completed dredging in Granton where they could. Will reevaluate during the drawdown on Loch Lomond. The first trout stocking has been cleared through the AGFC with hopefully no problems on future stocking. There have been 60 grass carp removed so far using the raffle, which is outstanding. There is a new protocol for contacting Lake Rangers after hours in case of emergency and unable to reach a Lake Ranger, call 911 or contact the BV non-emergency line. Main issue that was covered, there was a accident on Loch Lomond on Friday, August 8th after dark. They ended up contacting the County Sheriff's Office and didn't get a response. Three people, three property owners spoke about how Stonetankirk is becoming a party zone and they encouraged, they requested that Lake Rangers have the authority to write tickets and issue fines, which is something that you just referenced that we're working towards. They suggested Rangers' hours be changed to include night shifts and that request has already been accommodated. They were very upset. And Director Brooks, Board Liaison assured them that it would be discussed at upcoming board meetings and it has.
Thank you. Ms. Ruth, golf.
We have the golf report from August 13th meeting. We encourage everybody to either watch the meeting on the webpage or read the top reports. According to Durham Maldoon, the grounds were 25,238 down from last year, 988. Guest rounds ended at 9,283, they're also down from July. Year-to-date rounds ended at 113,061, down 9,845 over last year. Extremely hot July, it fell short last year, July rounds even with, just short, not by much, even though it was Highlands Golf Course was closed, the fairway project. Range buckets continue to lead, 38,873, up 9,964 over past year and it'll get stronger as we go. Graham Cornmire has several things to report. Clay and Friends of the Highlands and Dogwood teams have taken a project to make mixed containers for par threes at Dogwood and similar to the ones at Scottsdale. We appreciate their efforts in making this happen. August tee-in counter aeration events were very successful and grateful for the opportunity to complete the critical cultural practice in all our golf courses twice each summer. Village wastewater is still working through the permitting to be able to repair the worsted area, creek bank on number 13 at Country Club. We are beginning to see some recovery at Kingswood and Berksdale Greens where we saw the majority of wet wilt damage that was at bentgrass greens due to the minimal airflow and high heat and humidity in July, continue to work on that process. Ball green aeration on bentgrass courses will begin in September 8th, east course being closed for a day and a half once a week through the month, similar to what we did in the spring time. Tournaments reported from Alex Stanford. Two tournaments have happened since the last meeting, the parent-child tournament had 24 kids with all the family, had 122 participants. The men's club championship was held at the Bella Vista Country Club last weekend and Dogwood will host a correspond raising September 1st. And the AGA tournament event is this week, we encourage everybody to come out and watch them, it's 78 of the best juniors in the country, not just the area, they come from all over, actually out of the country several more. There was an open house for members to view the renovation of the Highlands on August 14th and it was held in the morning on August 14th. Budget considerations, the committee talked about it, they discussed several winter carp paths and the committee recommended that the golf operations select two courses to be designated as carp path only for the upcoming winter. The committee also discussed blue flag distances from the green and it was recommended that we leave the policy as is and try to monitor a little closer. Committee also discussed current dress codes for all courses and the current dress code remains unchanged. The budget recommendations from the golf committee to the board is as follows. Renovation of course fairways to Zoey's Grass was the number one choice along the same line, hopefully look at the leveling of tees at the same time on that particular course, whatever it might be. Evaluate the driving range at Scottsdale for improvements. The third one was evaluating tee boxes for the leveling. Carp path repairs was down there and the next meeting will be September 10th, right here at the boardroom and we invite everybody to show up. Thank you much.
Thank you Ruth. Beth, financials?
So we're here to discuss the July financials and as always, all the reports can be found on the website as well as this presentation. So we'll start with the consolidated for the month of July. Revenue is close to budget exceeding prior year at almost 4 million. Expenses, 2.8 million is exceeding budget in prior year. EBITDA is a positive 562,000, which is less than budget in prior year on a consolidated basis. In July consolidated revenue and EBITDA continued to fall short of budget as we've been facing the challenges on the POA without water side, the same challenges all year related to weather. And so while income was close to budget, we can see prior year figures, operating expenses were over budget, that negatively impacted EBITDA. And this is a little, you'll see a POA water breakdown coming up, which kind of clarifies how the revenue actually is more the driver for EBITDA being below budget than expenses are. Looking at the consolidated year-to-date figures, you're going to see the same story, revenue is close to budget on a consolidated basis. Expenses are about 400,000 more year-to-date than budget and EBITDA is coming in as a positive While EBITDA is 392,000 below budget and as I just mentioned, that's actually you're going to see on the POA side, revenue on the POA side being down is the main driver for that EBITDA being below budget. The excessive wet weather in the spring, the hard winter we had, the hot weather we've started to have has had a significant impact on golf operations. Less golfers coming in impacts the restaurants, the bars, the pro shops and all the other revenue as well, the traffic. Additionally, the extended closure of Highlands due to the renovation has impacted the golf operations revenue as well. We're prioritizing members on their tee times as we should, but then that means we're having less guest play and guests pay more than members, so we are feeling the revenue decrease there as well. All the departments have been tasked with the mandate to make reasonable expense reductions before the end of the year because of this revenue decrease and because POA is experiencing this tight, this tightness during this year. So the expense reduction plan has already been implemented with the goal of reducing as much of that shortfall as possible before the end of the year. So looking at POA without water now, just for the month of July, you'll see that revenue was just under budget and more than prior year. Some positive news for revenue for the month was the resale of lots, yay Doug. Trail maintenance income was 11,000 better and the campground income was 11,000 better, again, yay Doug. Worse than budget in July, golf fees again, 55,000 worse than budget. Membership transfer fees were 33,000 worse than budget, pro shop sales and F&amp;B income were both less than budget. And looking at operating expenses for the month of July, liability insurance and educational enhancement was better for the month. Worse was health, dental and life, workers comp, salaries and wages were just $12,000 where chemicals and fertilizers 11,000 worse and maintenance and repair and irrigation equipment, sod, janitorial services were all worse. So the total expenses on POA was 2,358,000, so I think it's about 78,000 or 100,000 less than budget or more than budget, sorry. So looking at it year-to-date, revenue is 555,000 less than budget and if you just move on down to EBITDA, you'll see that EBITDA for the POA only is 540,000 less than budget. So that tells you that the revenue is the driver behind that EBITDA being below budget. Switching to water, water is with all the growth in Bella Vista, that's showing up in the capital buy-in fees and new service connections that are, continue to be better than budget each month. With the rainy weather, there was less irrigation, so the actual sale of water was down, was worse than budget for the month. But all in all, water's revenue for the month was a little bit more than budget and quite a bit more than prior year. And looking at water's expenses for the month, the liability and casualty insurance was better. With that growth, we're buying more water distribution equipment and meter installation materials, so those expenses are worse than budget and health and life insurance was worse than budget. The total expenses for the month for water was 443,000, which in total was more than budget and more than prior year. And looking at water year-to-date, the revenue is 531,000 better than budget in water. Expenses are 313,000 more than budget and so EBITDA is coming in at 148,000 better than budget for water only. Moving to cash, water operating has 4.4 million, reserves 1.6 million. POA operating has close to a million and POA reserves has 852,000. And looking at the one pager, the departmental variances to budget for EBITDA for year-to-date, the winners golf maintenance, water, legal, maintenance and construction and the ones not doing so well, general income, that's primarily, that's a lot of things, but it's the biggest drivers in that are health insurance and liability and property insurance. Food and beverage and golf operations worse than budget. We have not borrowed, the POA has not borrowed any more from water and we've not borrowed any more from the bank, we have just paid some small principal payments and so those debt balances are virtually the same. I think we've went through everything else. Do you have any questions?
Alright, next on the agenda is open forum. Anybody sign up or either one of you want to talk?
Yes, sir, if you want.
You got three minutes.
Yeah.
Hey y'all, my name's Matt Sanders, my family and I moved to Bella Vista from Alaska last year, we're just here. We love Bella Vista for everything, for our churches, for our outdoor rec, for our golf, for the nature, everything. This, a couple, I think a month ago maybe, we voted for the new proposition that came through for raising of assessments. We voted yes, my family, but I'm glad to say it didn't pass because there is an issue here, being that we continue to use members to augment the decrements in our commerce, right? When we just saw on the numbers, we were down $350,000 for the month in food and beverage. Obviously a little bit of that's going to be from one of our golf courses that are down and this, that and the other, but without having P&amp;L statements for the last 12 months or running years, I can't give you any analytics, but there has to be some other way for us to scrub funds and increase revenue. I myself, who do golf, I don't want to keep augmenting everyone else's and subsidizing their golf. So if our golf needs to get raised, last year I believe we had over $2 million, we're in the hole for golf, 2 million, can I get a knot head? So we're not making money in golf, we gotta do something different there besides asking our members just to keep coughing up additional money to subsidize other golfers, that's not okay. I wasn't really planning on talking, but there's two people here, so like, so now I'll get into some of this interesting. There's a lot of dialogue online, there's a lot of ideas, there's a lot of people who are saying, hey, well let's allow renters to start using our stuff and I don't like that idea myself, sorry renters who are watching. But dialogue gets shut off on social media. So whoever's controlling our social media is purposely erasing comments, shutting off comments, not allowing the people of Bella Vista to talk and communicate. I don't know if this is a tactic, so that way we can continue to manage the way you guys want to manage, but I would also ask for transparency. Let's allow those conversations, there might be some new resolutions and answers that are out there with the members that obviously aren't here tonight. So, thank you for all the hard work you all do, I know it's not easy running an association like this, we've got lots of irons in the pot, there's lots of dynamics, so I'm not trying to complain, I'm very gracious, I'm thankful for being here, Bella Vista is wonderful, I hope we can continue to grow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What social, what social media platforms are being scrubbed?
Facebook specifically, so there's several like private pages that are being used, there's quite literally probably a dozen Bella Vista pages and then our POA page.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm Billy Beveridge. I've had two, a couple correspondence with Mr. Lloyd and I think you probably all have access to that, but, and I didn't, wasn't aware this was going to be an open forum, but anyway, I prepared something. In 1985 to 2012, we had seven of the most beautiful golf courses in Arkansas. Now closed nine holes of one of the only 36-hole complexes in the state, without regard or even asking the golfing community. Put in new greens twice, added cost, cover and uncover, new sand traps, we've lost our fairways, clubhouses are selling grass mats to hit off of, putting on dirt and we're still charging full price. This isn't golf. We forced out the crown jewel of Bella Vista in the middle of Bella Vista, handy for everyone, Papa Mike's. Breakfast, lunch, dinner, a golfer's friend and very friendly, great food reasonably priced, replaced with a mediocre, if that, barbecue place, my opinion. Bike and hiking trails in our backyards, through our golf courses, non-dues amenity, paying strangers in our community. It is our community, right? Or are we being taken over by Blue Crane and Walmart? I mean, we pay monthly dues, some amenity fees for golf, boats, kayaks, paddleboards, why can't we get Blue Crane and Walmart to pay monthly dues for all the lots, their bikes, trails that touch or cut through our golf courses and charging them a user fee and put a sticker on their bikes and their vehicles so we know they're paying their, their fees. I voted for the dues increase, didn't agree with it, the need for it, I'm asking the board to leave our amenity fees alone, get the outsiders, non-Bella Vistans, to pay their way to be in our Bella Vista. You are, you are all, you all are our Property Owners Association, so I ask you all to put Bella Vista first, not Joe Public. Sure, you approved millions to update and upgrade our, some of our dated facilities, which are nice and appreciated, thank you. Have all these projects been paid for and if so, why are we, why are additional dues and fees needed? Please build us and you, the property owners of Bella Vista, a prioritized plan and budget that fixes what's broke and identifies and prioritize future needs, wants and how we can pay for them within the funds currently available. Thank you.
Tom? Any other? Just want to make sure.
That's it, no, I think that's it. Right now we must.
So the way these work.
Since there's nobody here, I just have one thing, actually two quick things. One is, we love our red house, we went to the first time this week on a date night and had a fantastic meal, it was amazing. The exact opposite of doing the Highlands, we wanted to get a soda and they had to go to get me a bottle of Coke from the machine that's not even on, so it was a warm bottle of Coke, like there's little things like that. One of the ways to be able to bring in the revenue for the POA, specifically for the bike riders, because you can't really do a license like who suggested, it's a great idea, it's not feasible. But one of the things you could do is we have a really large short-term rental foothold here in Bella Vista and predominantly those people are coming to use our trails. Is there not a way that we can assess a fee, like a user night fee to each of these short-term rentals? When we look at the normal numbers, you're talking the 60% occupancy rating is our average in Bella Vista, a dollar a night fee to the POA would end up bringing in about $350,000 a year, just based off of.
The city does charge.
That's the city, that's not the POA, are we getting that back from the city? So if the POA needs to assess.
Thank you, thanks, I appreciate it. We can, afterwards we can chat too, that's my.
Totally.
Yeah, yeah, we're more than willing to have a conversation afterwards. Our policies clearly state three minutes and it's not, it's not a debate, dialogue, it's a you comment, we comment back. It's pretty much modeled after how the city does their, their meetings, so hence the timer, so. And we always try and be respectful because we wouldn't want to be in a situation where someone comes up and says something wonderful, we give them more than three minutes and someone comes up and says something not wonderful and we cut them off exactly at three minutes, so we have to be very careful. So we have to be very careful to keep everybody at three minutes. Okay. Um, so you brought up a lot, a lot, and so I'm going to try and take off a couple of them. But you're more than, I'm, I'll be here after the meeting if you want to sit down. But real quickly, our financials are available. We have years and years of information on our website. I encourage you to go there. Uh, quite frankly, not enough people do go onto our website, but it's all available by month. We have audited financials that go back 15 years. We have about eight years' worth of, uh, videos of, uh, board meetings. So a wealth of information is available on the website. Um, uh, renters, uh, we can't, uh, give them access. Uh, we can give them guest access and they have to get, pay guest fees. But there was a court case in 78, 82, that, uh, we cannot provide, give renters, um, member benefits. It's, 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 and I think you referenced that you didn't like that anyways, uh, but it's, it's, uh, there was a court case that says that we cannot do that. We encourage, you know, uh, I would say that with regards to forums and so forth, there's a lot, you referenced, there's a lot of, uh, social media, um, forums. You know, go for it. Um, but the forum that works best for the board, uh, in a structured, uh, manner is right here. And you can also email in your comments and questions and so forth. Um, uh, social media can be, uh, a challenging, uh, environment and, and we try not to delve into that too greatly. Um, but there are clearly private webpages, uh, neighbors and everything that, that they can do that. And we watch it. I mean, we, we watch it, monitor, see what's commenting, but we're not going to get into a firefight with the property owners and.
Not asking you to get in a firefight, but like our comments being erased on the POA webpage and the commenting being shut off on public posts for our members, that's the transparency that we're looking for. We don't want it to be in this closed box.
And what we say is come here for your comments, come here, send us emails and so forth. Um, uh, that's the environment that we encourage, encourage people to do so. Um, uh, the user fees, uh, um, you know, we've talked about those, uh, probably going up. Um, we encourage you to attend the, um, budget meeting, which will take place in early November, where the board will talk about the proposed budget and at that same time they will talk about, um, uh, the amenity usage fees, the proposed increases to the many usage fees. So, uh, a little bit early to be talking about that, uh, these fees wouldn't be able to be, uh, kicked in until March 1st of next year. Uh, it was referenced about charging, uh, bike fees. Um, uh, anytime, i- if we were to charge any fee for the usage of, uh, the bike trails, we would no longer be covered by the recreational use statute. Uh, mountain biking is inherently a hazardous endeavor and, uh, we want the state's protection. So charging to use, uh, the trails would not be good.
Even though it's on our property?
Yes, it's, i- i- if we charge for the trails to be used, we are no longer covered by the recreational use statute.
But by leasing, the POA leases out the trails for a dollar for what, 50 years that just got passed? And by doing that, now the ownership falls under the city, which now allows the state inherent danger policy. So anyone that gets hurt on the trails right now is under the inherent risk of the state versus if it's privately, maybe at the. Responsibility.
Yeah, so, um, and we, you know, we've, I think that we've, uh, you mentioned this. I think the board and the POA have done a tremendous job over the last 10 years on upgrading our facilities. And, uh, from what I've been told by a lot of people, that our golf courses are in some of the best shape they've been in in a very long time. I think we have a lot to be proud of and we've done a lot of infrastructure improvements. Uh, you may disagree, but that's, uh, the opinion that I hold. That's all, that's all I have. Thank you. Beck said, you're welcome to stay after and we can.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, all right, next on the agenda is assessment, election result recap. Um, encourage everybody to, uh, go on to, uh, the POA's website, uh, under elections committee. And you can actually see the certificate from the elections company. Uh, we did not reach, uh, quorum. Uh, quorum requirement was four, uh, was 50%. I think we had 41 and a half percent. Uh, so well, well short of that. And, uh, so it would not have gone through regardless. Uh, regarding the yes, no, I think we're at 46%, something to that nature. So missed on both. Uh, so, uh, that did not, was not approved by the membership. Uh, and the, uh, meeting, the video from the meeting is also available on our website. Yep. Recreational amenities fee. Okay, a new, new idea that, uh, we came up with. Uh, we started working on this about four months ago, uh, and we needed to seek, uh, input from outside council uh, on how to, uh, shape this the correct way. Uh, and what this has to do is with, uh, with the growth that we're experiencing in Bella Vista, when you have additional rooftops, that has an additional burden upon our amenities. And what we're proposing is that we begin charging a recreational amenities fee, uh, of $1,500, uh, which would be charged, uh, at the time of the meter install. Uh, this is by and large modeled after the water capital buy-in fee, which has been in place for about 10 years. Uh, the funds for the water capital buy-in fee must be used for capital projects or placed in reserves for future capital projects. Uh, in most cases on the water side, we're spending more on capital than we bring in from the water capital buy-in fee. So this, uh, the, uh, proposed new recreational amenities fee would be consistent with that. Uh, where all the funds brought in from this, uh, would be, uh, used for capital projects or in place in a reserve for future capital projects. Uh, right now, um, we anticipate, uh, that, uh, this may bring in as much as a million dollars uh, in a year with all those funds used towards capital projects. This compares to last year where our capital budget was 500,000, which is very limited in scope for a, an organization of our size. Uh, in speaking with the, with outside council, they emphasized, uh, that, uh, the fee must be reasonable. Uh, and we feel that the $1,500 is reasonable. And they also encouraged us to, uh, have, uh, provide, uh, our community with a 90, 90-day notice, uh, with the fee kicking in on March 1st, we've, December 1st, sorry, uh, December 1st. And, uh, we've already had a conversation with the water department and they anticipate they will get a large number of people, uh, coming in in the next few months. Uh, so, uh, it should be interesting. Um, so that is the recommendation that we're, we're making. Uh, once again, this is, um, due to the increased number of new homes. It's having a profound impact upon our amenities and this will help us keep ahead of that.
Is this properly called an impact fee?
Uh, we are calling it a recreational amenities fee.
But it is an impact fee, in a way.
The impact of new homes.
Yeah.
We're calling it a recreational amenities fee.
I move to implement the new recreational amenities fee of $1,500 for new home construction. With all these funds collected to be used for capital projects for amenities or placed in reserves for future capital projects. With the new fee going into effect on December 1st, 2025, and notice given to the community of the new fee.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, David.
I, I just think this is a great way to get, take some of the burden off our existing, uh, members that have been here for years and paying the fees that have, have allowed for what we do have to be here. And somebody new coming in town to, to actually have some skin in the game. I just, I feel like this would be a really good way to help our members out.
Anybody else? Javy?
We've talked about this a lot. This is not the first time we've seen these numbers, in case you guys may not know that. So we've really put a lot of work into this. I know with the outside council and the work you've done and our discussions, I think it's a great idea.
And, uh, Jason mentioned this at last week's, uh, meeting and I referenced that we started working on this four months ago. You know, you just, you can't pull this out of your hat, uh, overnight. The timing's a little bit weird because it's, uh, you know, just after, uh, the assessment increase failed. Um, yes, coincidence, like I said, um, we have, uh, emails, uh, that date back months ago. So we, not that we would have to, but, uh, we could demonstrate that we've been working on this for, for quite a number of months.
So as, as you mentioned, um, you know, Beth gave us the report that, you know, revenue is lagging behind this year for a number of reasons. And you also referenced the fact that, uh, the current budget has $500,000 capital. And we know that that's not keeping up. It's just not doing what we need to get done for the amenities that we already have and for any new ones we might want to add. So this is a answer for that problem.
The rule of thumb is that you want to try and spend, you want to try and, uh, have a capital budget that somewhat is close to depreciation. That's, it's not a perfect, and a, uh, not a perfect relationship, but it's, it gives you a general idea. When your assets are depreciating, you want to make sure you stay current. So our, our depreciation on an annual basis for the POA is about $2 million. So clearly spending $500,000, what you're covering it with $500,000 is usually health and safety. Things that have to be done. You have a little bit of flexibility. You add an additional million on top of that, now you start getting closer to the $2 million number that you want to be at. And you have enough money, uh, that you can spend it on capital projects that are going to absolutely benefit the membership. Um, you know, being able to do additional fairways, pickleball courts, those type of things. Uh, and, uh, Kathleen asked this question, um, uh, last week was, okay, so what's the plan? Well, as I referenced last week, when you're, when you only have $500,000, uh, to spend, what's your, what's your five-year plan? Um, health and safety, that's about it. If this goes through, we have already started the process of working on a five-year, uh, amenity-driven capital improvement plan. Um, uh, but I was waiting to see how this was going to go before having the staff put all this time and effort into it. Because if it doesn't go through, then, uh, like I said, health and safety is really our focus.
Yeah, we've, in the recent past, we've had the argument presented to us that with all the new housing going in and lots being converted from $16 to $40 a month, that we shouldn't need any more money. Well, because we have the new people, that's exactly why we need more money. Because those people expect amenities. That's what draws them here. And so we have to stay ahead of it.
All those, those, all those additional homes that are paying assessments, that money's going away to take care of those new people. So this is going to help. But once again, this, these funds must be, sorry, these funds must be used on capital projects or reserved. They can't be used for operating expenses. So if inflation causes expenses to go up, we can't take these funds and use them over there.
The only thing I would take issue with, you said, you said this fixes that? I think this gives it a, it gives it an IV drip, but it, it does help, but it doesn't fix it.
I agree with that. Any other comments? All right, go to a vote. All in favor of the recreational amenities? Yes, yep, there and there. All opposed? Staying. Uh, the next item, uh, each year we have the charitable giving committee. Uh, they are assigned $25,000, uh, and they, um, evaluate grant applications from Bella Vista-specific charities. If you recall, uh, towards the end of last year, the Rules and Regulations Committee, which was subsequently approved by the Board of Directors, modified policy 1.03 dot four. Uh, we made some fairly extensive changes to that. Um, so of the 15 organizations that applied, is that seven or eight? Seven. Seven organizations, um, qualified. We have a number of organizations that had previously received funds, uh, but were no longer eligible with the changes that were made to policy 1.03 dot four. Uh, so, uh, the, uh, charitable giving committee got together, uh, evaluated all the grant requests and their recommendations are below, uh, on how the funds should be distributed. Thank you, and we have, uh, you're abstaining and Debra's, Debra's abstaining, okay. Can you elaborate on that? Yeah, please. Why?
Uh, because I am on the board of the TV station.
Mike.
Because I'm on the board of the TV station.
Debra's a docent at the Historical Society.
Gotcha, okay. All right. Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation recommendations submitted by the charitable giving committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. Any further conversations?
My only comment, and I think I mentioned this last week, just, just out of courtesy, we need to make sure those that applied, that do not qualify and/or did not get awarded, that they get communicated.
Yes, this already occurred.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, the board, the committee chair has already reached out to all of them. Um, so that already occurred. Anything else? All in favor? Two? Oh, she's abstaining, never mind. So seven, oh, and two. Yes. Uh, the next item is the revision to policy, uh, 5.03. Now, this is the sixth time the board has looked at it, or the fourth time for the board and the, the Rules and Regulation Committee went through this. So if this is the first time you were, um, uh, watching this, uh, live stream or in person, and if the board doesn't comment at all, it's because I encourage you to go to the video from the Rules and Regulations Committee from two months ago, uh, when the conversation was much more lively. Uh, but, uh, for a policy to be approved, it must go through two months. By the time you get to the last meeting, it tends to not have much dialogue.
I make a motion to approve the suggested changes to policy 5.03, guest policies. This is the first reading of two required readings.
It's the second reading.
This, I'm sorry, that's wrong. It's the second reading of two required readings. It's wrong. Could you restate that?
I make a motion to approve the suggested changes to policy 5.03, guest policies. This is the second reading of two required readings.
Second.
Any more conversations about 5.03? Nope, all in favor? All opposed?
I'd like to, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like everybody to keep the, uh, people of Minneapolis in their hearts.
Amen.
In their prayers.
Yep, for sure. Uh, anything else before we go to announcements?
Anything else before we go to announcements? Nope? All right, all the meetings are in the boardroom here or live stream unless otherwise noted. On Monday, September eighth, Recreation JAC meeting at four P M. Wednesday, September tenth, the Lakes JAC meeting at two P M. And Ms. Ruth's Golf Committee is right after that, September tenth at four P M. The next Board of Directors G M meeting, which is a closed meeting, is September eleventh at two thirty. Board of Directors Work Session is September eighteenth at nine. That is here in live stream. And the next regular session is September twenty-eighth here in the boardroom and live stream at six P M. Yes, Jeff?
If we get some sort of resolution for the lake issue and it comes back to the rules and regs, then we would need a
You currently won't have one.
Meeting.
Yep.
If, if everything gets back in time.
You would have enough time to have
Have it in October.
Rules and regulation meeting in October and it would be approved by the end of November.
Fine.
So I, we can absolutely do it in September. But with the goal of having it implemented on January first, if the rules and reg, you'd be fine.
Yep.
But since you're the chair and I'm not going to tell you what to do.
Will this be something that'll need to be in the regulations book?
Yeah, we'll have to, what I would envision, what would occur is that if this is recommended to move forward by the Lakes Committee as a whole, then Doug and I, between the Lakes Committee meeting in September and by the time the rules and regulations committee meets in October, we would draft changes to policy and at the same time also draft changes to the boat regulations because we want to make sure, because everybody that registers a boat has to get one of those and has to sign off that they received it. And so we want to make sure that that is updated also. So that would, that would be the plan and it would give us roughly a month to work out all the legal wording and everything. So I think October would make sense. But we also want to make sure that we get the input from the Lakes Committee. As Jason mentioned, we had a meeting two days ago with the Chair, the Vice Chair, Rick Echols, Bob Walker, who's in charge of the Lake Rangers, our member resources. Doug was there, our General Counsel. So we had a good, good group meeting and made some significant changes to the original draft, which is what we want to do. And then the Lakes Committee is absolutely capable of making additional changes. So by the time we get it to the rules and regs, I think we're going to be in pretty good shape. Although the board has their right to make modifications at that time also.
So just for clarification, as I mentioned, next, will be, will we be discussing any of it next month? Or we'll have to go through rules and regs before we as, we can discuss it, before we'll discuss it?
Um, I would say no, it will not be any agenda item for the board for September, because it's going to go from lakes to rules and regs in October. So I envision, if everything goes as planned, that the next one would be rules and regs in October, work session, so forth. Then two, two, two months worth of votes.
Right.
And then it would be active in time for December first.
Okay. Thank you, just clarification, because I said next month earlier on, so I just want to make sure.
Right, but I also don't want to.
No, no, no.
The board as a whole has not seen this, so.
Yeah, we're good.
I'm, I'm jumping way ahead here.
Clarification, that's good. Anything else?
I just want to make a comment. Thank you for taking the time to come to the meeting today.
Last call. Any adjourned?